Councilman Rossini.
Here.
Councilman Colicott.
Here.
Councilman Pitts. Mayor Protem Zimmerman.
Here.
And Mayor Miles is ill and sent a note in that she'll be out, so it's a huge absence for her.
Understood. Thank you. Today, I'd like to ask Councilmember Pitts to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Right hand over your heart. Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation and the government, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, sir. Thank you. The Villa Park City Council and staff welcome you to this meeting, and we encourage your participation. If you wish to address the city council, please complete and submit a speaker card to the city clerk before the scheduled meeting time. Speaker cards can be found outside the entrance to city council chambers. Speakers will be called individually during the public comment section of the item they wish to speak on. Speakers will be limited to a time period of three minutes. Speakers were also able to submit comments in writing before 3:00 PM today. Those comments will be read aloud during the public comment section of the item. I'd like to start with presentations tonight. If we could, get the Orange County Sheriff's Department to start us off.
Good evening, Mayor Protem Zimmerman and council members. Thank you for having me. This will be the June 2021 Orange County Sheriff's Department Activity Report. So for June, we responded to 326 calls for services in the city. Of those, a few criminal incidents to highlight, not too many this past month, which is good. We had one grand theft reported on the 17,000 block of Lincoln Street, and this was a catalytic converter theft removed from a vehicle. We had three burglary reports, one on the 18,000 block of Sharon Lane. This was a residential burglary where the window was smashed and approximately $1,000 worth of property was taken. On the 10,000 block of Adams Circle, there was a residential burglary. This is a high-value loss. It was reported $176,300. This was in the process of one owner moving out, another owner moving in when this occurred. And then on the 18,000 block of Fernando Circle, there was another residential burglary where some miscellaneous items were taken. In our traffic enforcement, traffic citations, for the month, we issued a total of one parking citation. Our patrol deputies issued 12 traffic citations. And for this month, our enhanced traffic enforcement, the motor sergeant was actually on vacation and away for training, so he was unable to get here. He is back. He was here today, and I think he wrote maybe about a half a dozen citations, and they were all speeding. So we definitely want to encourage people to watch their speed, especially on Villa Park Road. It's easy to get going too fast on that particular street. We did have a couple of traffic-related incidents, one drunk driving arrest on the 29th of June at Wanda and Catella, and one hit-and-run collision on the 9800 block of Latisse Drive. That was a parked vehicle. And then we had two other collisions at Santiago and Bishop on the 17th, a non-injury traffic collision, and on Santiago and Brookside, a vehicle versus a bicyclist, minor, no injuries. And that is all I have for the report.
Okay. Can I ask about the catalytic converter? Is that something that we're tracking, how many of those are happening and how rampant it is in Villa Park?
Yeah, we definitely track it, and with our crime analysis tracks it for the whole department. I don't have the information with me at the moment. I can provide it for you. Pretty fortunate, Villa Park, the number of incidents are pretty far and few between, but they are occurring on occasion. So I think we've had maybe a half a dozen this year, off the top of my head. So I can look into that and get you some, you know, hard numbers if you want.
Sure. I just know that, we've talked about it in the past, and I know that there's a problem with it out there that I'm going to make sure we let our citizens know to watch out for cars left parked on the street and see if there's anything else we can do about it.
Yeah, definitely want to take as much prevention as you can with that. It's kind of a difficult one if you do park on the street, if you park in your driveway. Any type of lighting you have, any type of cameras, and then there's also the option of, they do make like a bracket you can purchase for your vehicle to secure, help secure your catalytic converter of the vehicle. And then also, if you take your vehicle to the mechanic, and you can have them etch some identifying marks in there. Your, you know, the VIN number of the car, because for whatever reason, this particular item of the vehicle doesn't have a VIN number on it, so it's hard to track back to a vehicle or some other type of identifying number that, you know, if we do catch someone, oftentimes we catch folks with three or four of these catalytic converters in their vehicle, but we have no way of tying it to a particular victim. So that's the difficult part, you know, we catch them, but there's really not a whole lot we can do without a victim to tie him to, so.
Thank you. That's really good to know. I didn't know that, so.
Yeah.
Any other questions, comments, council? Thank you so much for your time.
You're welcome.
Orange County Fire Authority.
Good evening, council.
Evening.
Last month, there was 49 incidents that occurred in the city of Villa Park. The ones of significance was a structure fire that was dispatched. Residents inside their home noticed they had smoke and smelt the odor first, and then noticed the smoke and accessed 911. We had a first alarm unit show up on scene. They weren't able to locate a fire, but what they did locate, the source of the smoke, which is an electrical issue inside the home. I just want to remind all the residents out there, please make sure that you do have smoke detectors inside your home. And if you do have smoke inside the house, call 911 and exit immediately. One of the things that I'd like to focus on is one of my areas of responsibility. As a division chief at Orange County Fire Authority, I oversee cities, but one of my areas of responsibility is community volunteer services. I'm in charge of Fire Cadet Program. We just built this program. It's a great program. I just want to kind of showcase and give some highlights here for the citizens here. If they have young adults in their household, that they can come and join the program. This program is designed for our young adults aged 14 to 22 years old. It teaches them the basic fundamentals of the fire service, life experience, as well as responsibilities. Our cadets meet weekly at fire stations throughout the county, the ones closest to Villa Park. It's going to be the fire station in Tustin, as well as the one in Yorba Linda. After 10 weeks of showing up to meetings consistently, they go through training at our RFOTC. They pass a test after the training, and they're able to ride along on the fire apparatus. We just completed our annual cadet academy, which we have explorers, as well as fire cadets from throughout the county, attend. It's a one-week-long program, and again, it's a great opportunity for youth to get involved in their communities and provide public or community service, as well as learn about the fire service. For more information, we have a webpage at ocfa.org, designed specifically for the Fire Cadet Program, with information as well as applications. That's all I have in the report.
Excellent. How old are the youth in that program?
14 to 22.
Okay. Any other questions?
Just a comment. I think next Tuesday is National Night Out, right?
That is correct.
We'll be here in Villa Park.
August 3rd.
Looking forward to seeing everybody. Fun night.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody. So now, at this time, we will review comments from members of the public to address any off-agenda items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council, provided that no action may be taken off agenda, on off-agenda items unless authorized by law. We also will be reviewing public comments on each agenda item. Steve, is there anyone present who, or who wrote in from the public that would like to comment?
We had no written comments, but we do have three speaker forums on off-agenda items.
Okay. Do we want to move into those now?
Yes.
Okay.
The first one was Dave Hanson.
Sir, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you, Mayor Protem Zimmerman and council members. My name's Dave Hanson. I'm here with my wife, Liz, tonight. We've been residents in Orange County since the early '60s. When I was thinking about coming here today, I remembered my mom used to get milk from a milkman. And I didn't realize, in the homes bakery, I didn't realize I was that old. So I started thinking about, what are you laughing about? Yeah, how old you are, huh? So thank you. Yep, we've lived in La Habra and Brea and Yorba Linda, and now we've, our fourth year here in Villa Park will be in a few days. We're on Serrano. We're right next door to Serrano Elementary. I want to thank the council for working towards the Smith Basin to enhance a lot of high-density housing. I think that's a wonderful, wonderful choice. Crowbar and Homes into Wanda and Collins didn't make a lot of sense to me. And working on a multi-story facility at Meats and Santiago, with the Serrano Elementary School in the morning and Saravilla Junior High, not only in the morning, in the afternoon, Villa Park being so busy, and Orange Lutheran being busy. Hearing that you're working towards a Smith Basin is a wonderful play. One thought, too, of somebody being able to look down onto a grade school in a multi-story facility, just really kind of, I said, "No." No to that, real quickly. So I really appreciate that. As you think about the Smith Basin, these are the things that I think about that I'd like to share. First, I think it's a great entrance to the hidden jewel. That's something that Liz and I have spoke about a couple of times, and the hummingbirds that are here in town are just so wonderful. Such a, just such a nice, simple way to go about our day here in Villa Park. I think it's a wonderful potential commerce site. We have our commerce site here, and that's it, in Villa Park. And I believe the Smith Basin could also be a wonderful place for retail, as well as for housing, be it homes that maybe people buy, be it homes that maybe people rent. I see a wonderful steakhouse over there on the bottom of the homes. You're shaking your head, councilman. How about a good steak Diane?
Steak, steak, sounds good to me.
Steak Diane and maybe a tangray and a little bit, a little bit of tonic. For me, I'm just overweight enough to enjoy that. Hi, Captain. We need some markets. I think another market would be, would be awesome. A place to have breakfast in the morning would be great. I know the sales tax revenue there would be wonderful for the city. I don't know of any city, I remember George Carlin, and one of the things that he said about churches. He says, "The one thing God could never do is create enough income." You know, the churches are always broke. God just hasn't figured out how to have all the money they need. And the same thing here for the cities. The cities always could use the income. I think that'd be wonderful for the property.
Thank you very much for your comments. I apologize. It's three minutes.
The three's up? Well, I tell you, that went really quick. All right, well, thank you. One last piece, real quick. We're signing up for an ADU. For the ADU, ADA DUs that you guys want to make, we're signing up for one of those. We're actually planning for that right now already.
Thank you so much for your comments.
So thank you for working on the Smith Basin. Great job.
Thank you, sir.
Next is Kathy Tracy.
Hello. This is my first time here, and I'm very excited to be here.
I apologize. Could you move the?
Sorry. Yes, of course. So, good evening, council. I'm Kathy Tracy, and I live at 1-8361 Churchill Lane. And I like to say I love living here in Villa Park. It's a privilege to be here to represent my neighbors. And I'm also here to ask you to address the poor condition of our two streets, Churchill Lane and Squire Circle. Okay, I have my three neighbors here that are kind of supporting me. I have one from Squire Circle and two from Churchill Lane along with me. And I also have a petition here, signed by our residents, asking you to please, please, repair our streets. This is not the first request. One of my neighbors, Todd Jackson, who lives across the street from me, has tried back in 2008. And then Bob Stemler, he doesn't live here anymore, because he told me not to give up on this. And he tried in around 2013, around that time. And I'm Kathy Tracy, and I've been trying since 2017. I've called the city manager, I mean engineer, three times, once a year, and I really don't get a follow-up call. I've called to find out if there's been any result of, result of me putting my name in and having them evaluate. There's actually a network of potholes, unrepaired cracks, and loose aggregate in front of each residence. You can, I took pictures, too, so I'd love to pass that around, if I may. Can I?
Sure.
Okay. While I'm talking, you can, you can look at it.
Sure.
Okay, that way we can do two things.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, I kind of labeled the streets, too.
Okay.
Get an idea. So, thank you so much for taking a look at them. It's gone on so long that the aggregate is seriously crumbling on both streets. Even, even when Churchill got kind of black-tard to fix some of the patches, we're getting cracks that are radiating from those areas. And I thought, right after they did that, I was so excited, because I thought they were going to resurface the road right after they fixed the cracks. But it didn't happen. Three years later, it's still like that. And what, what I'm really, my main concern for my neighbors, who I love dearly, I have 15 houses altogether on those two streets, 10 on one, five on the other, is the safety. I'm really, I'm a retired nurse, so I'm safety first, and you avoid having problems that way, if you prevent. So anyway, my main concern is I have my grandchildren that ride their bikes around my house. We have our neighbors who have at least one dog or two dogs that they walk. I'm really worried, because if you're not watching where you're going, you can, you could take a big fall. And so anyway, and not to mention, driving our vehicles over those holes and cracks and loose gravel. It's, you know, we all have nice cars. We all like to take care of, and having those rocks, you know, fly up is, is one other thing. Well, anyway, as a final side, we have known as many streets around us as I walked my granddoggie around. That streets have gone and done once and maybe twice. And so I really welcome you guys to come over to our place. It's not far. It's just off of center, between Jacquetel and Santiago. And please, I would love to be there when you walk through it with us, because then you can kind of judge for yourself. The pictures tell you a little bit where there's some holes and everything, but we got weeds coming up out of the repairs and out of the loose gravel. Squire Circle did not get tarred, patched, and their street, I, I went over there, and I thought, oh, my gosh. I have got to come here and represent them. And because I love my neighbors and I love Villa Park, and I want to be part of the hidden jewel, but we don't really look like the hidden jewel on our street. I'm not kidding. I'm really.
Thank you so much. I appreciate your time.
Thanks for your kind consideration, please. Thank you.
Mayor, if I could just interject, we are in the process of evaluating incoming, we put money, the council put aside money for a project to initiate this year. So we're looking right now at the streets, so we'll be coming forward, I hope, in August with a listing. And we'll make sure that we look at Churchill Lane and Squire Circle, make sure that that's evaluated as part of the, the upcoming project.
Thanks, Steve. Are there any others?
Yes. The last speaker request I have is from Mary Beth Felsen.
Welcome.
Good evening, councilman. I'm Mary Beth Felsen. I'm a resident, thank you. I'm a resident of Villa Park. If we're competing, I moved here, there were cows on the streets. It's a long time ago. We're.
Well, I have the belt there.
That's true. It's true. This evening, I, I want to address Councilman Pitts regarding your statement in the May City Council and in the open letter to Villa Park residents in the July sentry. Although you don't name me in that statement, you describe me as, quote, "The woman who presented Bob Colicott's falsified candidacy filing documents to the city when he ran for office." I did submit his 2018 candidacy forms to the city clerk, working with the city's election consultant, to make sure that they were submitted properly and correctly. So clearly, you're describing me, and a lot of people know it. You basically accuse me of submitting falsified documents. And that's a pretty serious accusation to be made at a city council meeting and published in the sentry. Remember? Published in the sentry. All these claims about falsified documents and not following proper procedures were soundly rejected in 2018 by the city attorney, by the Orange County Registrar of Voters, and by Judge Craig Griffin of the Orange County Superior Court in 2018. So, Robbie, if you would simply read the 11-page court judgment, I think you will find that every claim was rejected with supporting case law cited. I don't like being here tonight, but I have to ask, I have to tell you, I don't appreciate having my reputation defamed by a false, made-up-out-of-thin-air accusation. It's cost me a lot of pain and anger and time to react to this. So, but let's find a way to solve this situation. I would like a retraction of your statement about me and an apology. At the next city council meeting, I'll give you a month to prepare it, and in the August sentry, sign just the way you signed your open letter. Robbie Pitts, Villa Park City Councilman. Further, I strongly suggest you apologize to Councilman Colicott, Mayor Miles, and former Councilman Bill Nelson. Get it all done in one step. How about that? You may decide I don't need an apology, but then the residents can judge what type of councilman you are, sir. So let's take advantage of this opportunity and clean this up. All right? Thank you.
Are there any other comments?
That's the last of the speaker requests I had.
So, may we now move on to public hearing?
Yes.
Our first hearing is to review, to waive the reading in full of all ordinance and resolutions on the agenda. I will open the hearing. Staff, please give the staff report.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. The first item is a waiving a reading, as you mentioned. This is a process that we go about each meeting to expedite the movement of the hearing. And it involves just simply waiving the full reading of all the full ordinances. So with that, we'd recommend approval. We're available to answer any questions.
Councilmembers, do you have any questions of staff? Is there anyone here to speak on this hearing?
No.
Is there anyone who wrote in from the public?
No, sir.
Thank you. Councilmembers, is there any discussion regarding this item?
No. So moved.
Uh, I will now close public hearing. Thank you. So if we could have a motion and a second.
You vote on the machines tonight.
Excellent. We can all vote on the machines. Thank you. Could you please read the?
Passes by a 4-0 vote.
That was fast. All right, bear with me.
Hey, Chad, you've done a good job so far. Four now. Nice job.
Working on it.
You're doing good.
All right. Moving on to public hearing, item two. Our next hearing is variance 21, 2021-03. I think we're skipping this one. It's got.
Yeah, this item has been continued at the request of the applicant. I will note that it is posted, and anybody who is the public would like to speak on it is free to come forward, and we need to recognize them and let, allow them to speak. However, the council will take no action this evening. It will be continued for council action on the 24th of August. Correct. Well, the council officially has to continue it to that date, so we don't have to renotice it, right? If that's the council's direction.
Okay. So do we need a?
Need a motion to continue.
Need a motion to continue if there's no one here to speak. First, we should make sure that there's no one available here that came to speak. If they want to come speak on it, we have, we should hear them.
God, is there anyone here to speak on this?
Nope. Okay.
No? Okay.
In accordance with the wishes of the applicant, so moved.
We have a move in a second. Can we vote?
It passes by a 4-0, so we heard August 24th at this regular meeting at 6:30.
Excellent. Thank you. Moving on to the consent calendar, we will now consider our consent calendar. All items on the consent calendar are considered routine.
I think you skipped an item.
Did I?
Item number three.
Oh. Apologies. Our last hearing is the consideration of ordinance 21, 2021-622 to establish a comprehensive set of regulations and standards for animal waste regulations in all areas of the city. I will now open the hearing. Staff, please give the staff report.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. This is the second and final reading of the ordinance, the proposed ordinance, 2021-622, which addresses the city's municipal code establishing a set of regulations relative to animal waste regulations in all areas of the city. We had, this item was initially put on our May agenda, our April agenda, subsequently continued to allow us time to work with the affected parties. We did that. We came back in June with a first reading of it, of a proposed amendment. And we have not heard, it was passed unanimously at that time. We've not heard from anybody at that time, so this would be the second reading. If approved by the council, it would go into effect 30 days from adoption. So we would be prepared to answer any questions, but there have been no changes since the June action of the city council.
Okay. Is there anyone here to speak in this, this hearing? Is there anyone that wrote in?
No, sir.
Okay. Councilmembers, do you have any questions of staff? Or there's any discussion about this item? I just wanted to say, I know this is a fairly routine process and what we've gone through here, but I think the way Villa Park did it, reaching out and getting feedback from the community, I just wanted to commend staff on our interaction and being able to work with members of the community to make sure that this fit right and works for our citizens, so thank you. Is there a motion on this?
So moved. Second.
Moved in second. Everybody could record your votes. Steve, would you please read the results?
It passes by a 4-0 vote. So again, that will take effect in 30 days from the action today.
Excellent. Thank you. Now, we're moving on to the consent calendar. We will consider our consent calendar. All items on the consent calendar are considered routine and usually enacted by one motion approving the recommended action listed on the agenda. Any member of the city council staff or the public may request an item be removed from the consent calendar for discussion or separate action. Councilmembers, are there any items from four to 14 that you would like to remove from the consent calendar?
I would just offer that, before we do that, number nine, I, as submitted that, I'm pulling that and deleting the items, so we'll not be considering number nine as part of that package this evening.
Okay, so nine is removed.
Yes.
And then, Councilmember Rossini, you said eight?
Eight, please. Yes.
Number seven.
And seven. So if you could have items seven and eight pulled from the consent calendar, is there a motion to approve the balance?
Yeah. So moved. Second.
Moved in second. Can we record votes? Steve, would you read the results?
Passes by a 4-0 vote. That's item four, five, six, 10, and 11.
Excellent. If we could move back to each item, we'll start with, we'll, we'll do them in the order that they were pulled, start with eight.
I only pulled that out of an abundance of caution to potentially, well, hopefully, we won't have to go back in the opposite direction. I know there's been an uptick in, in virus cases, and, correct me if I'm wrong, this is all about that. Is there any chance, any thought, any possibility that we might be a little too hasty in this? I know that the OCFA, for instance, is going to basically be ending this in a couple of months. Are we on the bleeding edge or just the cutting edge of this?
I believe a number, I'll let the city attorney weigh in as well, but a number of cities have taken action. The local emergency, at this point, it's, there's no pressing need to maintain it in place. It grants emergency powers and things that we are not exercising. In the event that we were to move forward, I think that was something we want to bring forward and highlight for the council anyway. So in the event that there were something that came up, we would probably want to come back and report that to the board and have the, have the council take action at that time. So I, there's no problem. There is no implication. We're not receiving funding as a result of anything, so there's no financial implication. And there is no detrimental impact of us rescinding now, and even if we do come back, we come back. But I think it also, it, it moves forward, and I think it's consistent with the actions being taken by a number of other entities, and I'll let the city attorney weigh in as well.
Yeah, well, back in the separate world, I suppose, when COVID started, we didn't know how everything was going to play out, particularly financially. And a lot of times, as municipalities, when you eventually seek reimbursement for items provided, particularly through the FEMA process, you have to have emergency declarations. So, you know, we put this in place primarily to cover that. Now, obviously, funding has not come from FEMA. It's come from a flood of federal and state cash, specifically allocated, you know, statewide or nationwide. So the initial impetus really. So the initial impetus really for its imposition hasn't played out, so I don't think we need it. If there came a situation where the city manager did need to act immediately, within our code, he's authorized to declare emergency, to come to you immediately, to ratify that emergency, and it could be re-triggered, and it does give some more flexibility for immediate action if necessary. I don't think legally we need that right now, but that's really the council's discretion.
That's fine. I have no personal or professional objection to that. I just want to put you on the hook. Thanks.
I actually had a question about this, too, and I was going to pull it if it hadn't already been pulled, but my question was, with money coming in from the federal government, there isn't any sort of requirement or stipulation that we're in, we have the state of emergency declared in order to receive additional funding, right?
No. The CARES Act money, the first wave of federal money, was already given to us, and that was not based on emergency status, that was based on the reality of the COVID, and that was done by federal action. The second wave, the ARPA funds that you'll, we've talked about, that's based on population and size, so it has really no stipulation or connection with your activities or COVID or state of emergency or even the number of incidents you have in your community. It is strictly based on the size of your community and how you fit into the bracket, if you will, of a formula they use for CDBG, which is a grant funding allocation formula. So there's actually no connection. We were, like the mentioned city attorney, we were denied our FEMA claim, not unlike most of the jurisdictions that I've talked to. It's been a pretty consistent process. So there have been some claims, but we just didn't hit the trigger amount. We have to have an excess of like $35,000, and we didn't have $35,000 of expenses related to COVID, so that were unreimbursed. We had COVID, we had CARES Act and other funds already, so it didn't affect us at all.
Okay. Thank you. Do we, any other comment from council? No?
Happy to make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. If we could vote on this? Could you read the results, please?
Passes 4-0.
Thank you. I believe the next one was item nine.
Item nine was deleted, so we're going back to seven.
Seven.
Number seven.
Seven. My apologies.
Steve, I pulled this one because I wanted to understand the evaluation process we went through to evaluate this group of people. I'm concerned that we've had problems in the past, and do we have other alternatives as a result of whatever your bid process was or whatever that you went through to secure this quote?
Thank you. I would like to comment directly on that. While there may have been alleged problems, I think those were adjudicated in court and determined that there were no problems with the filings at the time, so I don't believe that we did, so I would.
Perception. It's the perception.
I think legal decision, so versus perception. So that would be my position on it. We have option, if the council were to vote and say they didn't want to do this, we certainly have the option to go out with other clerks, but we've used this clerk at the time. This person takes minutes for us, helps us with our records retention process, and helps with our elections. So I believe this person is a very experienced and capable person with comes with high references, et cetera. So again, based on my experience, we did not go out to bid. If the council so wishes, we can actually go back out and see. I don't know that others would be willing, because candidly, it was hard enough, because we're so small, we don't attract a lot of attention as far as somebody wanting to get into the business. We don't attract a lot. So anyway, from that perspective, that's where we are. We did not go out to bid, but certainly if the council's prerogative, they want to go out to bid, we can, see, I can't tell you that anyone would express interest. They may or may not, I don't know.
Okay.
Are there any other questions, comments? No? Did you have a recommendation or a motion on this?
I'd like to see other alternatives, if we could.
Okay. Do we have anybody else that wants to second that, or do we have an alternative proposal?
Approve what staff has recommended here, consistent with the agenda.
I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Can we vote on that? Could you read the results?
That passes by a three-to-one vote with Councilman Pitts dissenting.
Thank you. Third item pulled, I'm sorry, Councilman Colacott, you pulled one of the items, too? No, was that all of them?
Number nine, I think, is pulled.
Oh, nine was what we pulled. I had three in my head, and so I thought, all right.
You were right. But that was not the one that.
Got it. That's why I went back to nine second. I see. So we will now move on to the city manager's report.
Actually, you jumped an item there.
I did another one, huh?
You're moving too fast.
Wow. Okay. Item 12. New business. We're not done yet, are we? Okay, so new business. Our first item of new business is the NV5 engineering contract extension. Staff, could you please give the staff report?
Yes, thank you. As you're aware, we provide, we secure our engineering services, professional engineering services from NV5, firmly known as Civil Source, and we've been doing that the last, we actually did our last agreement in 2016, and it was amended in 2019 to provide an assistant engineer to allow us Friday. We get part-time help on, basically on Monday, Wednesday, and then Friday as well now, under the amendment we approved in 2019. So the engineer is here for 16 hours a week, and the assistant engineer is here for eight hours a week, so that comes to a 24 hours of a course of a week that we have somebody. We contract with them. We do not have staff onboard, which saves us the ability to, we don't have pension or benefit costs, but we do have a professional cost. Now, in contracting with them, they did initially, I'll be very honest, request an increase, but I indicated to them that we wanted to keep the flat rate. They consented for a year contract, so we're back at the council this time with a one-year extension and the same dollar amount as we had last year. So no rate increases for any of the existing costs that we would. It is budgeted, and I would recommend approval, but I'm available to answer questions.
Mayor, I'd like to recuse myself from this one. I have a limited employment relationship with NV5, so I'll step out.
Other council members, do you have any other questions for staff?
No.
Is there any advantage to getting a longer extension? Is this any sort of monetary compensation that we could get in terms of like a buy five, get a discount or something?
Well, it was the other way around. If we go longer, they're going to want to raise. Sort of, I got it, we worked our way back into one year, and I said, okay, well, it's one year at a time, because, I said, let's see what the economic conditions take us next year, and what the prevailing rates are, et cetera. That's always sort of the deal here. The other reality, too, is, and I want to keep this, is that the current engineer is, contract engineer is in his early 70s, so I want to be able to discuss with them transition. And if I have a year contract, I have the leverage to discuss that with them. If I have a longer-term contract, I'm basically sort of at their mercy about who they might assign or whatever here. So on a one-year deal, I think I have more leverage and can bring back to the council something that would be advantageous for the city moving forward and allow the city at council with some transitional opportunities.
Excellent. Very well thought out. Thank you. Is there any woman present or who wrote in from the public that would like to comment on this item?
No, sir.
And do we have any other questions from council members on this? No? Do we have a motion? Is there any further discussion?
Happy to move the matter.
And I'll second it. Could we have votes? Could you read the results?
It passes, well, it does not pass. It's a two-to-one vote, so the item fails.
So ordinances, resolutions, contracts require a majority vote of the entire membership, so it would require three votes to pass.
So just for the record, as of June 30th, the contract expired, so I will notify them tomorrow. We will, effective tomorrow, will have no engineering contract in place for the city.
Is it appropriate for us to have a discussion about this in the next city council meeting? Because I believe this is quite an urgent matter.
Oh, I believe, I mean, as of tomorrow, we will have no contract. So we have no contract. It was effective.
Have 30-day extension clauses in there?
No, we don't have an extension. No, I don't believe, off the top of my head, I don't believe we do.
Right, well, I mean, what the council could do, it's within the ambit of the contract negotiations to authorize the city manager to reach out to them to continue the services until the next meeting where a final determination can be made.
But that would be at the mutual consent, they may decide.
Oh, they have to consent, yeah.
They would, they could certainly say, no, we don't want to do it for 30 days, and so we.
And could, just for, I think, edification, because it does not sound like there is a disservice, that there is a dissatisfaction, pardon my language, with their capabilities, their service level, their cost. If perhaps Councilman Pitts could weigh in specifically on what he's objecting to about the contract, this way, if there's something that they can potentially correct or give direction to staff, because we had no nothing, we just see a no, that might be helpful.
You like to weigh in?
I weighed in last year. I didn't change my vote.
Maybe you could refresh those that were not there, because there's folks in the audience that were not there.
I'm sorry?
There's folks in the audience that were not there.
Well, it's okay. I gave him my information and my input and.
Very well. Thank you.
If they don't agree to a contract extension in the interim, is there another alternative? Is there anything else that we can do at this time?
I would have to, I would have to explore an emergency contract. As of tomorrow morning, if someone walks in the door, I do not have authority to have engineer here, so I will make sure, as of this evening, they're notified that nobody will report from the engineering.
So you're saying the contract expired today?
June 30th.
June 30th. So not tomorrow, not the 28th?
No, it expired.
Oh, June 30th. I'm sorry. July, I see. I thought you were saying July. I misunderstood.
Why did we do this last month?
We just hadn't gotten to the negotiations with them as far as the process.
So are we?
So did they extend it for an additional 30 days?
They were willing to go ahead and provide it based on the assumption that they were moving forward in a contract that would be a year.
Okay.
So.
Well, they extended it once, maybe they'll extend it again.
I can't speak for that, and I don't want to speak for the owners at this point.
So the council, I mean, yeah, I can give the city manager direction to reach out, to see if they will do it until the next meeting. That's option number one. Option two, Steve was saying, I mean, he does have authority under his contracting authority levels to, for at least a month, hire another firm or somebody to provide those services if anybody, I don't even know how you do that for a month, but.
If I could suggest that if I could ask the Councilman Pitts if we could have authority to contract through July 30, through August, that will allow us to come back, so I have engineering services in place and not have to go out, because I would be subject to the rate of the market, and the market rate is higher than I'm going to be paying. So if I could come back in August with a contract but have authority to get through August, so if I could have authority to go two months, basically, and get council approval to do that, then I could come back with an agreement.
I'm okay with that.
And I can, that way I don't have to turn any way to counter tomorrow morning.
I'd be happy to make that motion to grant you authority to negotiate that for the next two months to make sure we're through.
Well, basically, a month and a half, but basically, at this point. But yes, it would allow us to come back in the August meeting with a proposal for the balance of the services.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second, if we could vote? Read the results?
Passes by a 3-0.
Okay. So that gives us until through next month.
Through August and at the current rate. And I mean, assuming, again, that they are willing to continue at that level.
Okay.
Again, subject to approval of NV5. If that's not the case, I'll notify the council immediately.
Got it. I believe that closes that matter, and we can now move on to the city manager report.
Okay. Thank you. Excuse me.
Oh, I'm sorry. We should bring Councilman Colacott back. My apologies.
Crystal.
I'm trying to make Crystal look good, so everybody wants her back.
Did we have anybody on Zoom tonight? No? Okay.
Excellent. If you could proceed, please.
Sorry. Couple of things, and I think that Councilman Pitts has already mentioned. August 3rd, from, which is a week from tonight, from 5:00 to 7:00, we'll have National Night Out, in which we will have the participation of the fire authority, OC Sheriff's Department, animal care, we'll have the care ambulance, the Rotary will be here, I believe the foundation, the Women's League has graciously offered to feed the first responders, and they're all looking forward to have some home-cooked food. And we will have a number, I believe the Boy Scouts may be here as well. So it'll be well-attended from 5:00 to 7:00 right out here. We would encourage anybody to come and thank the sheriff and the fire and those who are first responders for being here. Oh, and I meant the Neighborhood Watch will be here and a number of other.
I think the Friends of the Library is also looking at being there.
Okay. I hadn't heard, but, so, that's the one item. The other item I wanted to mention is abnormal. We talked about the ARPA funds recently, the CARES Act, the money from the Fed's federal government relative to COVID. We did receive, as I mentioned earlier, we were going to receive two allocations in, on July 19th, we received our first allocation. We received $692,546. That will be a similar amount next year. It has to be spent by, I believe it's 2026 that it'll have to be spent by, or 2024 it'll have to be spent by. So we have some time to figure this out. Interestingly enough, the final guidelines from the Department of Treasury are still not finalized, so we're still grappling with a little bit of that. But what our plan is to come forward, again, like I mentioned before, we'll be coming forward with having a special meeting of the council where the public can weigh in, and we can talk about various options and proposals. But I just wanted to mention that, at this point, we have received $692,000, and it is, has to be COVID-related activities, so there's a number of opportunities, because they have some way it's worded. We did not have revenue loss that they, allowing us to reimburse. We did not have the purchase of PPE and those kinds of things that they're allowing. So we have some other challenges, and we're going to have to spend, be creative in the way we spend it, but I think if we work this right, we can do something that's very special for our residents. And I, once I get those guidelines, I'll get those out, and we'll have a public discussion so that people can see what their money is being spent on. It can't be spent on streets, which is interesting, and there's some infrastructure. As you're aware, the, right now, Congress is negotiating an infrastructure bill that could potentially provide money there. So it can be spent on water, but the city doesn't have water responsibilities, so there's a very interesting sort of challenges we have as the waiver's structured. But anyway, I will let you know more about that. We did do all the documentation, and we were certified, submitted everything on time, so at this point, we're in good shape. We'll have to start reporting how we spend it in December, so we do have some, plenty of time, and it's a multi-year expenditure requirement. With that, the Knowles development, we are expecting to be out to bid. Again, we followed in, we finally got the contracts in place with the state, so they confirmed we'll have $180,000 from the state to bolster the project, which is what we had planned on, but securing that by contract involved us submitting a grant proposal, getting a contract awarded, submitting what the concept was in writing and narrative, so it was a lot of process to go through. So we actually have contracts in place, and I'm meeting officially with the state representative again next week, or the week after, I believe. But again, we'll be, we're moving forward on that, so we have to follow some very specific guidelines about bidding, and we have to do the minimum wage requirements as well, so we'll have to go out to bid and do that type of process. We would hope to be able to break ground in, I'm hoping, in September, and that would be great. It's a little slower than, but when you get state money, you kind of operate, they'll guidelines about bidding, and we have to do the minimum wage requirements as well. So we'll have to go out to bid and do that type of process. We would hope to be able to break ground in, I'm hoping, in September, and that would be great. It's a little slower than, but when you get state money, you kind of operate, they'll be funding much larger than half the project, so we have to sort of follow their guidelines. But for those people who are in doubt, we're moving forward. We, the other thing, too, is we have not received, but we are anticipating, some guidelines that will be distributed by, I believe, the water districts will be reissuing at some point regarding the drought and the conditions that California is experiencing, or will be experiencing, some very heavy drought conditions. What those guidelines will be, I don't know, but it'll probably be similar. We're expecting much similar to what we had in the past. For the record, the city has maintained those conditions in the past. We're only watering twice a week on our green belts and doing all those things. I know Councilman Pitts had inquired to see what we could do, and we are, we are complying already with the old standards. So unless they go further, we're where we need to be. I can't tell you where they're going to be, but I would anticipate getting something forward, coming forward. We are also talking, we talked about the recycling last council meeting. We believe Republic and they'll be coming forward by September with a proposal. We're hopeful that we can have something with a minimal impact to the residents, so that they don't have, for instance, a fourth barrel or something along those lines, which would be, I believe, sort of troublesome and problematic. We don't want to impose that on the residents, but we're dealing with that. The other thing I would mention, too, is that we have not received indication from the, any formal indication from the HCD, State Housing and Community Development, regarding our draft proposal. They have until August third to hit our deadline, the sixty-day mandated deadline that they have from our submittal, because we submitted it June third, so they'll be up till August third. They have indicated to us that they will be responding by then. They intended to respond to us, and they also gave us some preliminary indications that they had not dismissed nor approved anything we submitted. So at this point, it's, they're, they're, they were asking some more questions. So I'm optimistic that we're going to be able to move forward on the, the submittal as, as originally presented, with probably more detail being requested and from them. I don't, I don't know what that'll be, because the kinds of questions they had were very generic and not so specific at this point. But we'll let you know more, and once I get that, I would expect prior to our next meeting, we'll have something informal in writing. I will share that we did, the, the Public Law Center did submit a letter to state HCD contesting our plan and the plan of a number of other cities in Orange County as not legal. I have not seen the plan. It was submitted directly to HCD, so I don't know the contents of that. We'll try and get through that and see what we have as there and whatever. So, but I understand it was not just us that was targeted. I think a number of other cities who had submitted draft plans were also got some input from, from Public Law Center. So just as a forewarning that, you know, there's, there's going to be a lot going on in the housing element over the next probably sixty to ninety days. That's all I have. I'm available to answer any questions.
Are there any questions or comments?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the report. Moving on to mayor and council member matters, we'll start with the meeting attendance reports, the first one being Orange County Mosquito and Vector Control District. That is Mayor Miles, and she is not here. Next one being Orange County Sanitation District, and I have a couple of items from two meetings I attended the last week in June and second week in July. First being the compost outreach program that I discussed last time. OC SAN is a compost outreach program to help member agencies reach compliance with SB thirteen eighty-three that goes into effect January twenty twenty-two. Cow Recycles regulations will require cities and counties to have procurement programs in place to annually purchase recovered organics such as composted biosolids, mulch, renewable gas, and electricity from biomass conversion. OC SAN has partnered with their biosolid compost manufacturers to assist member agencies meet these requirements and make compost available at a discount. The goal of this program is to close the recycling loop and utilize biosolids locally. So they will be reaching out, if they have not already, to the city to talk about how we can interact with that program. I think, other than approving the budget for next fiscal year, there wasn't anything specific to Villa Park to discuss. So that encompasses my report there. And next, moving on to Orange County Fire Authority.
That is mine. On July twenty-second, I attended two meetings, same evening. One was a special meeting that cleaned up some procedural questions raised by a director of the timing of the prior meeting. I'll spare you the details. Nonetheless, that went off well, and the procedural matters were addressed, consistent with our legal counsel's advice. The majority of the evening, of the nine hundred and two pages of staff reports, yes, nine hundred and two pages, dealt with contracts, but items of note in the consent calendar that should be brought up, in my opinion, is the budget adjustment for general liability insurance. The OCFA's general liability insurance has gone up roughly eighty percent to a tune of seven hundred and ninety-one thousand, six hundred and seventy-nine dollars. That's not because the OCFA has necessarily done something wrong. It's just the fire service in general, the risk we face, the fact that we have a year-round wildfire season now. Obviously, the utility fires and the liability that they're facing does not help matters, but that is something that there were some significant questions and concerns about. Moving on, all the way down to the discussion calendar, there were, there was a review of the purchasing, purchasing ordinance, special procurement provision, and proposed amendment to the procurement ordinance, first reading. I'll spare you the details, needless to say. Majority of the meeting dealt with closed session matters. Contracts involving, and this is public information on the agenda, the firefighter, Orange County Professional Firefighters Association contract, Local thirty-six thirty-one, Orange County Employment Association contract, and Orange County Fire Authority Management Association contract. Of course, the details I cannot discuss, but nonetheless, that was dealt with, as well as the public employee performance evaluation of the fire chief, and another conference with Labor Negotiator about some other personal matters. There were two other matters involving significant exposure to litigation, and two other matters involving existing litigation. Again, those are closed session matters, and I can't discuss, but it was a long meeting, went a little after twelve, but we got some good work done, and moved the fire authority in a positive direction. Overall, the budget looks good for the fire authority. There's a fire station down, and correct me if I'm wrong, Burke, it's, is it in Laguna Niguel that's getting a new foundation? So Station Forty-Nine, so we're addressing some significant capital improvement issues. Long-term projections for the fire authority as far as unfunded liabilities are in the direction that we want them to go. And overall, I think the fire authority is doing a great job for the residents of Villa Park, and I think we should all be very thankful and grateful that we have the brave men and women that are out there protecting us, especially with the wildfires we've been seeing, we've been seeing. So just be careful, everybody. I want to take this moment to remind people, lock your gates, watch your pools, summer drowning, summer drowning, summer drowning. And also, when you're at the beach, our friends in Dana Point and the beaches always remind us that, hey, it happens at the beach, too. So just be careful, and be careful with your barbecues and keep your brush trimmed. So that's about it. Thanks.
Thank you for your service on that, too, because it seems like it's consuming a lot of time.
It's okay. It was, it was a good meeting. We got a lot done. Thank you.
Excellent. City Schools Advisory and the Orange County Library Authority Advisory Board had no meetings this last month. Law Enforcement Advisory?
I'm sorry?
The law enforcement.
No meeting.
Okay. And Villa Park Community Services Foundation?
Yeah, we met last month on the, I think it was the twenty-ninth. We've had two events since then. I hope, hope everybody enjoyed the Fourth of July Parade. It was so nice to see so many people come out, participate in it. It was nice. We had all the council members there, but it was, it was a good time. It was great to see so many people. I think this is probably the largest crowd we've had in quite a while. And then last Friday, which Councilman Colacott and I attended, was an event in, at the school where the Beatles cover band was playing, and that was, it was fun. It was really enjoyable, had a good time. There were quite a few people in Villa Park and along with Orange that attended, so the place was, was packed, a lot of dancing and having a good time. So it was really a good event, and compliments to the foundation for that. The next event's probably going to be Halloween Fest, if all goes well, and, you know, we don't have to worry about too much COVID anymore, but hopefully that's the next event we'll have keyed up.
Excellent. Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Next would be Housing Legislative Committee.
That's Crystal.
Uh-huh. Okay, and as is Bridges at Kramer Place and the Citizens Advisory Committee. So I believe that closes us out for our meeting attendance reports, if we would like to talk about individual council member information items. I was going to start with Councilmember Colacott. Nothing received?
Nothing to report.
I, I just had one thing I'd like to say. Villa Park lost a very good friend here recently with Howard Kozinski, Howard Kirchner, excuse me. Howard Kazawi and I campaigned together, along with Vince, you know, back in our first term, and, you know, he was, he was, he was a good mentor for me. You know, I've talked to him over my, over my tenure here on, on the council, and, and got coaching from him and so forth, and I really do appreciate his input. I'm sorry that, you know, he's, he's not with us anymore. Going to miss him. God bless his family, and I hope we'll all say prayers for him. But we will miss Howie Kazawi, and thank him for all he did for the city.
Thank you. I was going to mention that I attended the Orange County Fair City Officials Meet, event this past weekend, which was well-attended by boards of directors, members from the OC Fair, as well as our state assembly and state senator as well. And it was a lot of fun. They actually, this was another sellout night for the Orange County Fair. The fair is doing really well this year. They are, it's super fun. We particularly enjoyed, they had, one of the mother pigs had just given birth to eleven piglets the last Thursday, so they were three-day-old piglets, adorable, amazing. And then they have the pig races and all the rest of the fun stuff at the OC Fair. So I highly encourage everybody to go check out the fair this year. It's, it's super fun. I especially, you know, since we got, we missed it last year, they're really making up and making it lots of fun and enjoyable for everybody. I love the Fourth of July Parade this year, seeing everybody from Villa Park out there and walking around. We had our, our brand-new puppy out there, and I know other council members brought their, their dogs, and just all of the community involvement and everybody getting out there and being together. That, plus the Beatles tribute band, I wish I had been able to attend that last Friday. I know Jill Kouli does a fantastic job putting all that stuff together. I think this is, she was saying, maybe her last event that she's, she's doing for this, but I know she's been highly involved in getting all these things put together over the years, and just getting everybody from Villa Park into a place where we've got everybody together and can hang out and talk and enjoy each other's company. Really love when we do that. That's fantastic, so.
We just need food trucks next time.
Food trucks, huh?
Food trucks.
Okay. I know in the past, you and I have handed out free waters for, on Rotary's behalf. Okay, great. And again, Concert in Parks, a great thing for Villa Park. Love doing that. So, yeah, look forward to that in the future.
And the Interact kids were there, so they, they supported the event. There was, I don't know, probably ten or twelve of them there. They, they did a really nice job in helping man the different tables, the snack tables, and hand out the water and the sodas and stuff like that, so.
Well, they will be there helping out Rotary for the National Night Out, and I look forward to seeing everybody out, right out here in front of the city hall for that. It's next week, am I right? Next Thursday?
Tuesday.
Tuesday, next Tuesday.
Five to seven, right?
Thank you. Appreciate the clarification. Next Tuesday. See y'all there. So if there's nothing else, then I would like to call a meeting to adjourn. Thank you all for attending.